Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, May 6th or 5th. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Swenby.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Okaberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and it looks like we have a very nice crowd. And with that, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I don't see any changes, so we'll look for a motion to approve. We have a motion by Brent Fenby to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving down to our mayor. Mr. Mayor, we have some proclamations.
First, we'll do the proclamation. And the proclamation is for the National Day of Prayer. And it reads, "Whereas prayer is a vital part of our heritage as one nation under God, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is an American tradition, the first Continental Congress in 1775 proclaimed the first day to encourage Americans to affirm the nation's spiritual heritage and to enlist prayer for local, state, and national leaders, seeking God's guidance for them and grace for us as people. And whereas the United States Congress passed a resolution signed into law by President Truman in 1952 establishing an annual National Day of Prayer to join together as a nation acknowledging God in prayer each year. And whereas in 1988, President Reagan amended this resolution to permanently establish the first Thursday of May to be the National Day of Prayer. And whereas, a day of prayer is an opportunity for all Americans of all faith, ethnicity, and political affirmations to pray, to renew, and to inspire the joy we find in our faith, family, friends, and communities, to remember those who are suffering and facing hardships, and to pray for peace throughout the world. And whereas, a day of prayer is also a day to remember our brave men and women who are defending our country, liberating the oppressed, preserving our freedoms, to thank them and their families for their sacrifices, and to pray for their safe return. And whereas, the theme for this 64th Annual National Day of Prayer theme is, 'Lord, hear our cry,' emphasizing the need for individuals cooperatively and individually to place their faith in the unfailing character of their Creator, who is sovereign over all governments, authorities, and men. And whereas, the Scripture verse chosen for the 2015 National Day of Prayer is found in 1 Kings 8:23, chapter 8, verse 28. Hear the cry and the prayer that your servant is praying in our presence this day. At this critical time of our nation, we can do nothing more important than pray. Now therefore, I, Tom A. Kuntz, Mayor of the City of Oatana, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2015, as a day of prayer in the City of Oatana, and I urge our citizens to join with me in prayer. And to witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Oatana to be affixed this fifth day of May 2015." And on that, we will at City Hall on Thursday at 5:30 hold a prayer session outside of the front door. If it's raining, we'll be in the art center.
Thank you. And moving on to the next item, we have a letter of resignation, which I will let you address, Tom.
Okay. I received a letter of resignation from Mr. Hildendorf. It says, "Dear Mayor Kuntz, please accept this message as notification that I am resigning from the Oatana Airport Commission effective April 14, 2015. I appreciate the confidence you placed in me as an appointed airport commissioner to help guide and make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Oatana, mostly, most notably as a chosen member of the Master Plan Advisory Group. Now that the airport's 20-year master plan has been completed, and I've served four years on the commission, I feel the time is right to pass the reins onto other enthusiast aviation supporters and advocates in our community. Thank you for the opportunity to have served in the airport commission. If I can be of assistance during this transition, please let me know. Sincerely, Ronald S. Hildendorf."
Thank you. And our next step is, we do have some new appointees.
We do, and I think everybody's got in their packet the list, but I'll go through the retirees first, the old board members. I'll go through the ones that are going to be for reappointment, and then I'll go through and say the new members. And with that, I hope to get council approval to move forward. So the ones that are coming off are Dave Marquay, served on the library board; Russell Dunfoster, served on the Oatana Library Board; Joe Hunt, served on the Human Rights Commission; Joel Green, served on the Airport Commission; and Ron Hildendorf, Airport Commission. The ones that are eligible for reappointment are Todd Hald, Airport Commission; Darryl Bale, Downtown Parking; Dennis Warner, Housing and Redevelopment; Mark Krug, Human Rights Commission; Abraham Husein, Human Rights Commission; Laura Dolan, Park and Rec Board; Lee Costalecki, Park and Rec Board; Matthew Gillard, Planting Commission; Josh Miller, Planning Commission; Public Utility Commission; Dale Simon, Shade Tree Commission; Jim Linder, Shade Tree Commission; Roger Wasek; West Hills Commission; Earl Anderson; and West Hills Commission; James For the new members, for the library board, Ed Fernandez, Library Board; Jolene Mose, Human Rights Commission; Tracy Duchesne, Airport Commission; James Kilken, Airport Commission; Greg Lewis, Fire Chief, Fire Civil Service Board; Michael Beckman. And with that, an ask for permission for the reappointments and permission for the new board members, so we do oath of office.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. And with that, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
There was a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. The recommendations, do we have a second?
Second.
Jeff Okaberg on the second. Any further discussion on these? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion has been granted. Please welcome them.
I think I've got four members agreed to serve on different boards here tonight, but I didn't come up.
If I can get you to raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. Aye? Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Yes. Anything about this, how was I prepared to respond?
Constitution of the state of Minnesota? The laws of the City of Oatana? And that I was faithfully and impartially discharged? The duties of the office of? Of the City of Oatana? Which I have been appointed, to the best of my knowledge of ability, so help me God. Thanks for saying yes and serving. I appreciate that, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. And before we completely get done, I think we have one person here that received a plaque. You're also going to be mailing out. Thank you. Very, very blessed for your service. I will turn until you see the camera. The City of Oatana, the Mayor of the City Council, trust your appreciation and deep gratitude to Joel and to Tom for his six years of service on the Human Rights Commission, May 15, 2015.
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to represent the City of Oatana and the City Council and the Human Rights Commission. It was a great opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I do want to thank everyone who has served and welcomed the new board members or commission members to the fold. With that, thank you very much. And, yes.
One comment. I still have one position left to fill, and that is on the Shade Tree Commission, so if somebody has the interest of the Shade Tree Commission, please let me know.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to 1.5, Local Board of Appeals and Equalization to reconvene the meeting. And with us, I'll move on to Bill Efforts.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the City of Oatana Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. This represents the reconvene meeting of the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. Tonight, I have for you a list of properties that we have physically inspected as a result of sending out the valuation notices in probably the first part of March. And this is a list of its entirety. It also does include the two people that appeared at the original meeting on April 22nd, Candace Kay at 128 Rice Street, and Maria Buck. Those were adjustments, those were physically inspected and adjustments were made, and they are listed on this sheet. Tonight, I would ask for you to approve these changes, and just with the caveat that anybody that is not satisfied with these, with our results, they do have the option to come to the County Board of Appeal and Equalization June 16th.
Thank you very much, Bill. And with this, we do have the list, which we need to approve. What is the council's wishes?
Move to approve the list.
We have a motion by Jeff Okaberg to approve the list. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. And again, as you said, if they aren't in agreement, they still have the county to appear in front of them.
That's correct. If they're on this list, then they do have that right to appeal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And with this, it concludes that. Now we need to adjourn that meeting, and looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some of.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved, and thank you very much. Now we will move on to... Well, we do need to approve the minutes of the board meeting, don't we? So, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting we just adjourned. Motion by Nate Dotson to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these have been approved. Moving down to financial report, we'll ask Greg to read the financial report.
Okay, here's a recap of total expenditures presented for approval tonight. Checks over $20,000 issued are $266,109 to In Situ Form Tech USA, sanitary sewer slip lining; $30,044 to Oatana Ford Chrysler for 2015 Ford Explorer for the Police Department; $49,357 to Steel County Auditor, it's the first quarter LEC costs; $39,950 to Yamaha Golf and Utility for 10 golf carts; other expenditures of $167,188 for a subtotal of $552,650. Add to that the Section 8 payments of $56,177 makes total expenditures presented for approval tonight of $608,828.3.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions from the council?
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Fenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bills have been approved. Moving down to consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license permit requests, department reports, et cetera, all grouped into one motion. And what is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a second? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these have been approved. Moving down to action items, 3.2.1, 2014-15 labor contracts, MPA sergeants and MPA corporals. And we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Staff has been in negotiations with the union for an extended period, and I'm pleased to say that we have reached a tentative agreement. I'll just summarize the changes. We agreed, the proposal includes an increase in base wage effective January 1, 2014, up 2%. This rate was consistent with the rate provided to other unions and non-union personnel in 2014. $25 increase in the uniform allowance effective January 1, 2014. We added language that allowed the healthcare savings plan, as we have for non-union and other unions. 2% increase in the employer portion of health insurance. This is also consistent with other groups and non-union staff. And an increase in the base wage for 2015, up 3% effective January 1. Budget impact for fiscal year 2014 will be $14,280, and for 2015, $21,850. This funding has been included in the 2015 budget, and I recommend approval of the contracts with Minnesota Public Employee Association.
Chris, basically, all the three are all pretty much the same?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Do you want to read the difference, the amounts, for the other two? Then we...
We've included the sergeants and the corporals in this one.
Okay. So we...
That will take care of both.
Okay. Great. Thank you. With that, we do have 2014 3.2.1 contract. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve for the sergeants and the corporals. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Now we can go to the...
IEOE.
IEOE, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to the non-union wage adjustment, what is the council's wishes on this one?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent Fenby to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these have been approved. To proceed, and we do have one or two union contracts that is...
The only one not settled is the police patrol for 2014 and 2015.
Okay.
Everyone else is settled. Oh, and the fire, pardon me, for 2015.
And we're still working on those?
Yes.
Okay, great. Moving on to, and thank you for that, Chris. Moving on to ordinances, 3.4.1, second reading of proposed ordinance 6-15, and with that, we'll go to Kyle.
No, this one would be me. This is on the human rights, right?
Oh. Human rights, I'm sorry. Chris?
Thank you. If you recall, we had a study session with the council. Fred Ventura and myself reviewed the changes with the council. Primarily, the changes removed the name of the specific entity for collaboration efforts, and also some language relating to the no-fault grievance procedure. I think there was no questions or concerns at the study session or at the first reading, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Does this being an ordinance, ask for a roll call?
Swenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. We have all eyes on this, and this has been approved as a second reading, so this is now an ordinance. Moving down to the second reading of proposed ordinance 7-15, amend Section 94-079, paving underground facilities. And there we go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is a second reading, and essentially, we're defining the ownership of the pump service lines. Currently, they're not defined. We'd like to define them as being the ownership of the property, the same as the water service and the sanitary service already are. We recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, again, this being an ordinance, ask for a roll call?
Swenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. Thank you. We have all eyes on this one. We now move on to the second reading of proposed ordinance 8-15 to amend Section 94-060, curb construction requirements and inspections, and we're back to Kyle.
Good evening. Our current insurance requirement for contractors working in the city right away is a $100,000 liability policy. We would like that increased to a more current $1 million liability policy, and recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, again, this being an ordinance, ask for a roll call?
Swenby.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. And again, all eyes on this. This is, again, second reading, so this is now under the new ordinance. Moving down to 3.5 resolutions, Resolution 46-15 to accept bids and award contract for 2015 CIPPS. And this, we'll go to Kyle again.
We received bids last Wednesday for our Kirdon Place pipe systems. This is the lining project that, actually, we just completed 2014's. We're trying to get back on schedule and get 2015's going. And recommend approval of the contract with In Situ Form Tech of White Bear Lake for $284,263.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
I think this is a great program, and I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Greg. We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
There you go. I'm going to take Kevin on this one. And we have a second by Kevin Rainey, and any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving down to Resolution 47-15 to accept bids and award contract for 2015 crack sealing project. And this is still Troy, or Kevin, Kyle, I'm sorry.
We received bids for the crack sealing project. This is the routing and crack sealing that's done in front of the seal coating, the maintenance on the streets. We received three bids last Wednesday. There was an issue with the low bidder. They didn't respond properly to the bid. They had some inaccuracies in their numbers. You can see that they were considerably lower than the other bidders. We received a letter documenting that from them. I have talked with the city attorney. We believe that they should be declared a non-responsible bidder, and that we should go with the second bid from Asphalt Surface Tech of St. Cloud. Asphalt Surface Tech, or Astec as they go by, was the company that did the work for us last year. It was slightly over the engineer's estimate, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
Just want to make a note that the resolution has to be changed, because it has blacktop in it, so they can change the resolution before you sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
Only a motion to approve.
And we have a motion by Brent Fenby to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion on this one? Thank you for that update, Brent. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 48-15, preliminary and final plot of Festal Edition, and this we go to Troy.
Chad Lang in Festal Farms is requesting approval of the preliminary and final plot of Festal Edition, which is a two-lot industrial plot located on the north side of West Bridge Street. Lot 1, which is a 10-acre lot, is intended to be sold immediately for construction of a power generation plant, and then Lot 2 would remain vacant and be farmed until a project is identified for that. On the plot 2 is a 900-foot-long cul-de-sac shown on there that does exceed our 500-foot maximum length, which was noted at our public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, although that cul-de-sac would not be constructed immediately. About 164 feet of that would be constructed, and that could act as a joint driveway if we have a single use on that second parcel. So it could be possible that the cul-de-sac be vacated, and it just ends up being a common driveway for two parcels. It will be marketed, so that there could be more than just two parcels on the whole plot, and staff pushed to get that cul-de-sac put on the plot for planning purposes in case there are more than just that one additional lot. Services would need to be extended, sewer to the east, a bit to the center of the cul-de-sac, and water under Bridge Street to service the property. We did have a public hearing at Planning Commission. We had no opposition, and there are six conditions placed on there by the Planning Commission, one of which is a development agreement that would need to come back to the City Council for approval, and that will detail more about the construction of the cul-de-sac, when it would happen, if it were to happen, and then who would pay for it. And that'll come at a later date once all that is figured out with the developer. So staff would recommend approval of the preliminary and final plot of Festal Edition as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council? And what are the council's wishes? We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is 3.54, Resolution 49-15 to accept bids and award contract for the Art Center expansion project. And this, we will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Council has met with the president and members of the Art Center Board in a study session. We reviewed their financial position in regards to this project, and also the historical designation status. Bruce Schwartzman of the BKB Group, their architect, has had numerous communications with SHPO Stake Historic Preservation Office. BKB is comfortable that the current design should be in line with the state's guidelines. However, Mark Walbrand, our city attorney, has prepared the attached resolution that you have before you tonight, which subjects the contract award to approval from the Minnesota State Historical Preservation Office. We feel this protects the city and this project. Budget impact, the city's portion of this project is limited to $500,000, which is payable from the sales and use tax that was passed previously. So in light of all of this, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve this as presented. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion here? I do want to thank the staff from the Art Center, the effort that they have put into this to get it to this point, and we look forward to seeing a beautiful addition there. So, thank you. With that, I don't even know if I should say that until it's approved. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is approved. So, congratulations, and thank you. Moving on to 3....
6.1.
6.1, miscellaneous authorization of purchased property... 6.1, miscellaneous authorization of purchased property at 437 Mineral Springs. And there we go to Troy.
Residential redevelopment is one of the city council's priorities in our strategic plan and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority has been pursuing opportunities to eliminate or redevelop blighteded properties. This property at 437 Mineral Springs Road did come on the market and staff went through the property and proposed purchase by the HRA. The city has a purchase agreement on the property contingent on city council approval. The purchase price is $26,300 and that would be paid for by the HRA. The HRA did approve that purchase at their meeting on April 27th. The property is a large, has a large lot and does back up to Darts Park. The house is small, it was built in 1890 and sits just feet off of Mineral Springs Road. We do have issues with snow plowing, throwing snow on the house and actually backing out of the driveway is very difficult to do because the sightlines are very tough. The HRA would pay for the demolition of the house. That would be by a bid process done privately as we've done previous house demolitions in the past. City also owns the property at 425 Mineral Springs Road, which is right at the entrance of the park. We actually bought that on a contract for deed from Forest Hill Cemetery back in 2003. We've got about three years left on it. It does need a new roof and the HRA approved just paying the remainder part of that contract for deed off rather than put a new roof on it. And then we could do demolition of both properties at the same time and we'd likely get a better bid per house if we demo both of them at the same time. And we're estimating the cost of demolition per house at between $10,000 and $15,000. So the plan of the property would be that it would become part of the park and we do have some parking needs with the ball diamond down there and so this would provide more space to eventually potentially get some more parking down there. So again, all expenses would be paid for by the HRA for the purchase and demolition and the city would be responsible for maintaining the property as parkland once the property is purchased. So staff would recommend approval of the purchase of the property at 437 Mineral Springs Road.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Les? Troy or maybe Kyle, with these purchases and to add parking, do you anticipate changing the entrance on the entrance to the park to improve the parking or would that remain the same? And I'm looking at the, it's on a hill, so I'm just wondering how that's going to work.
Well, we have not gone to any extent of drawing up anything. We just know there are parking needs and any additional space we can get will help us in alleviating any parking. We have not looked at what a parking lot, expanded parking lot would look like or if that has any impact on the entrance. That'll have to come at a later date. We still do have one property that sits in between the two we would be demoing, so of course we'd have to be conscious of that property as well. And we would, probably something we'd have to draw up and put into our CIP capital improvement plan for future expenditures. It's nothing we're immediately looking at doing, but this is an opportunity to get some land to be able to have the room to do that, so we thought this would be a good opportunity for us.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Greg on this one. Greg Schultz on the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved to purchase. Thank you. Moving down to 3.62, enterprise license agreement with OPU. This will go to Troy also.
We have recently hired our new GIS position, GIS coordinator, Ruben Seifert. He came from Faribault and started about a month ago. So we've been analyzing our software needs when it comes to computer mapping and we've been talking with OPU about their needs as well. We have found that we can each get great savings if we partner together on enterprise license agreement through Esri, which is our current vendor. The agreement would be for three years at $25,000 per year. This would be split between both OPU and the city, so the city's portion would be $12,500. There would be a discounted rate for that first year as we're into May already of this year, so the amount for 2015 would be $9,221.62 for the city's portion and that would come out of our GIS budget that we have. So staff would recommend approval of the agreement with OPU for the cost sharing on an enterprise license agreement with Esri.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. We are now down to public comment and if anybody would like to wish on, speak on anything that is not on the agenda, please come to the microphone and sign in.
Hi. Hamid Torpor here. So I recently learned that I'm able to possibly buy my old house back on Maple Drive that I hear the city is hoping to buy and it's my intention to, I've actually already made an offer to the bank to buy it back, to fix it, to rebuild it and move back in. So I'm hoping and praying to Jesus that you guys will work with me and not kind of step in my way because I've been homeless now for five years and I've been unable to purchase a house and as much money I make and what I do, I can't get a house that fits four kids and two dogs and two cats. And so, you know, I can live in an RV for two, three weeks and then be able to fix my house in, you know, two weeks, which would be awesome. I've talked to builders, I've talked to the surveyors, I've talked to every person I need to talk to and they said literally, two weeks, with all the help I have, I can get back in my house and make it like livable again. So I'm hoping and praying that you guys will give me a break and cut me some slack coming through the process, so.
Do you have any...
I think the appropriate, this is a, this is a big topic.
I know, I'm just trying to...
And I think the appropriate thing for you to do is to make an appointment with the city administrator and the other city staff who are involved with that home where your attorney and yourself and us can meet and talk about it.
Yep, totally. I'm just trying to get, make sure that everyone knows where I'm at and what I'm trying to do and I don't want it to be like, oh, I didn't know. Because last time everyone said I had help and I didn't and I didn't have help. So here I'm saying, I am, I do have the finances to buy the house with the lien off of it. I do have the ability to fix it. I do have the ability to make it back to what it is. I'm hoping that we can get it done, so. Yep, I'm definitely down to it. My attorney will be in touch, but...
Okay, very good. We'll wait, we'll wait to hear from you.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Roger Masick, 646 East Vine. And I'm looking here, we've got, gonna be buying 10 golf carts. Can I be, use those without renting them? Question though that brings up is 10 golf carts, I assume for the country club, for the golf course. Do we come out positive when it comes to expenses on the golf course? I mean, we're in the recreation business, but from what I've heard in the past is essentially the fees cover all our expenses. Is that correct or not? Or am I supposed to be jumping cartwheels because we're spending $40,000 on 10 golf carts? But anyway, the other part I'm looking at is I see our property taxes are going to be going up anyhow because of our labor agreements here. And what are we at, 2, 3, 4, 5%, whatever? Basic math here is you accumulate, your equation has to balance. Your income has to go, has to meet expenses, at least on personal finance and I guess government finance is the same way. So I'm looking at tax increases here. And also I want to encourage everyone to read this little New Urban Agriculture, it's with the Shade Tree Commission notes. It's an interesting way of looking at what we take as a liability with trees and turning it into an asset.
Thank you, Roger. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment and we'll start with Brent.
I've got nothing this evening.
We'll go on to Nate.
Nothing to add.
Jeff?
Nothing to add.
Greg?
Just a reminder, as we all know, they've started on reconstruction of Mineral Springs Parkway, which is good to see. There are road closed signs out there and it's, it's tough to get in and out of the park, but I would hope people be respectful of the workers out there. They go, people seem to disregard the road closed signs. They try to drive through and the construction crew has had to post people out there to stop cars and it's, just keep that in mind, that's all I'm asking. We want safety for everybody.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else? Dave?
May 15th is coming up and that is Police Memorial Day. It's a date that was intended to honor officers that have made the ultimate sacrifice, but it also honors all officers in uniform. I would like to ask the city to have a blue light to put in their outside yard lights or whatever that evening to show support for our local officers. You can't turn the news on the last couple of months without seeing police departments taking a hit and I think our guys and gals need to know that we've got their back. So that's what I'm asking.
Thank you very much. And I agree with you there. And then we'll move down to the mayor.
Thanks, Les. I'm just going to welcome Ella again to our meeting and I know that you did some traveling here since the last time you were here. So you want to give us just a quick report on your travel?
Sure, I would be happy to. Well, I was away in Cambodia, which is in Southeast Asia, and I was there for a State Department program that's called the Youth Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative where 72 Southeast Asian leaders that were 18 to 25 years old came together to talk about climate advocacy. And so I was able to do some presentation there on a program I did last summer as well as participate in the other sessions and I learned a lot of cool stuff and we talked a lot about what government can do for climate advocacy and making sure that we have sustainable processes for using our resources. So it's really exciting to have gotten to work with them and to experience a little bit of different cultures as well. So, thank you, I'm happy to be back.
Thank you, Ella. And Kevin earlier said he didn't have anything to say, so I wasn't going to ask him, but I will anyway.
Thank you. First, congratulations to the From the Heart people. Great, great weekend for that. Corky's Early Bird as well, they contribute dollars back to our scholarship fund, which is very, very important. I was a little disappointed last weekend to see the placard signs, they came out like dandelions and they are placed in right of way. We have ordinances, they shouldn't be there and between those and the vinyl signs that are also, you drive down 18th Street, you drive down Oak and you see those vinyl signs and they don't meet ordinance as well. I know that Greg and Troy are working on that. Let's try to keep our community beautiful. That's all I had.
Thank you. And I understand that the Corky's has exceeded the size and capacity of Otana and they had to use some Faribault ball diamonds?
Yes, yes. They, in talking with Corky and Lauren Dietz, who runs the tournament, they think that this was one of their best tournaments ever and we're excited to see the donation come to the PartnerX Scholarship Fund.
And they sure had beautiful weather.
Yes, they did.
Thank you. And Tom?
Just another comment. This is a week that our state legislature puts together committees to try and merge the House and the Senate side together. So we are fortunate enough to have Petersburg, Representative Petersburg and Senator Jensen on the transportation, one that's trying to merge the Democrat and Republican proposals. So hopefully that we will see some benefit out of that on Highway 14. And today I was up at the Capitol today and the other things are workforce housing, job training, broadband, and the list continues to go on that we are trying to get dollars for.
I understand that the session will be closed before our next council meeting or very close to it?
The rumor that is up there, it's probably going to be extended two weeks.
Oh, okay.
That's a shock.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome to Ella and just to let you know that she's been mentoring with me in city administration and also learning about community development. She helped me with a presentation that I had to do for the symposium for the eighth graders and she helped me jazz it up for a youth kind of appeal. She did a great job. She's a joy to work with, very sharp young lady and very impressed with her and have enjoyed my experience with Ella, so just want to let you know.
Thank you. How do you have time for school?
And no comment.
Anyway, thank you very much for what you're doing and with that, I have nothing to add to this. It's been a wonderful weekend and look forward to many, many more like this. So with that, Cheryl Entertainment, motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, video adjournments.[1758.13]